And we continue at 1:07 in the afternoon. Talk Radio 790 KABC, The John Phillips Show, broadcasting live from the Morongo Casino Resort and Spa Living Room Studios. Where a game of blackjack sounds mighty fine right now. I always hit on 16, by the way. The dealer's showing a 10. Mr. Randy Weigs at the sports desk in Culver City.
John, the Oakland Police Department has a brand new idea to deal with the fact that 911 doesn't work in their city. If you see someone breaking into a car, you can slide into their DMs on Instagram.
Oakland, I love you, but you don't love me.
You know, it's good that they're thinking outside the box, but at some point, wouldn't it just be easier to fix 911?
Apparently not.
It's Wild Wild West out here.
I guess so. 800-222-KABC is the telephone number, 1-800-222-5222. It is a pleasure to welcome our next guest to the program. She is the Los Angeles City Councilwoman representing the 11th District, that is Venice and Mar Vista. You can get her online at councildistrict11.lacity.gov. Councilwoman Tracy Park, welcome.
Hey, John, how are you?
I'm good. Thanks so much for stopping by.
Always a pleasure to be with you.
Let's start out with a caller topic that we did on this program earlier this week. Recently, we've seen the horrific terrorist acts that Hamas perpetrated against the people of Israel and all of the gory details associated with that, including the rape of women, the beheading of babies, people being kidnapped, and I can go on and on and on. And unfortunately, one of the byproducts of that is that antisemitism has reared its ugly head, not just in the Middle East, but all over the globe, including here in California. Most recently, there was apparently a demonstration that just took place at UCLA where the crowd was chanting, "Israel, Israel, you can't hide, we want Jewish genocide." We saw students attacked verbally at Manhattan Beach Junior High School in a very ugly antisemitic sort of way, and the administration there is being criticized for making the victims of that attack have to sign waivers essentially saying they won't talk about this in any sort of public forum. We saw a family in the San Fernando Valley have an antisemitic attacker entered their house with a knife. And we took calls for an hour straight last week or earlier this week from Jewish listeners who were essentially saying they feel under attack, they don't feel like the system is going to protect them. We of course have a district attorney that's supported by the Democratic Socialists of America, which are the ones that are putting on these demonstrations in so many of these cities that are cheering on Hamas. They're saying they're not wearing their yarmulkes, they're not wearing their Star David, they're taking down their mezuzes, they don't want to be a target, and they don't feel like the government, and by that I mean the city, the county, the state, is doing much to protect them. What would you say to those Jewish residents of Los Angeles and Southern California who feel under attack right now?
Well, let me start by saying I was absolutely devastated and horrified by the Hamas terrorist attacks in Israel. We are talking about families who were celebrating high holidays, women, elderly people, children, abducted young people at a music festival abducted and murdered. This is one of the worst atrocities that we have seen in that region ever. And as I have said before and will say again now, I personally view that as an attack, not just on Israel, but on the United States, on the city of Los Angeles, and on Jewish families right here at home in Los Angeles. And, you know, in the immediate aftermath of that, as I started engaging in conversations with Jewish leaders across my community, my message to them was that I shared their concern about the difficult days that would lie ahead, whether that is instability and war in the Middle East, or what happens right here at home. We've seen a rise in antisemitic incidents in Los Angeles, everything from vandalism and offensive flyers and banners to the recent shooting in Pico Robertson, to the things that have unfolded here locally since the terrorist attack on October 7th. I am absolutely disgusted and infuriated by much of the rhetoric around this, by the hate speech that we've seen on college campuses and on the internet. And I want to be very, very clear throated in my support of Israel, of the Israeli people, and Jewish and Israeli families right here in Los Angeles. Our public safety partners here locally are working very closely with the federal government to monitor for threats, providing additional security around our airports and other critical infrastructure, as well as enhanced presence and security around Jewish places of worship, Jewish institutions, and businesses. So there is cause for alarm, but I do have faith that our public safety partners and leadership here in the city of Los Angeles are taking this issue very seriously.
One of the themes that came up over and over and over again is the support that the district attorney, who would ultimately be responsible for prosecuting these crimes against people of the Jewish faith, if they are the target of an antisemitic attack, would be George Gascon, who is enthusiastically supported by the DSA. He just had his big campaign kickoff recently where members of the DSA were giving speeches and certainly promoting his campaign for reelection. Given the DSA's association with so many of these demonstrations that we've seen in New York and California and the state of Washington, they don't feel like he would be an honest broker who would protect them because of that association. I do not believe he has still issued any kind of statement about what happened in Israel. He's been fairly quiet on the subject, and they see that as a huge red flag.
Well, and I think there's really two pieces to unpack in what you're saying, John. First of all, is the antisemitic platform and policy that is unfortunately infiltrating local politics through the DSA. This is an extremist organization that openly calls for the elimination of Israel for support of the BDS movement. Candidates for political office who are endorsed by the DSA or who receive material support from the DSA on their campaigns are required to take pledges to never visit Israel. It's scary, and it is time that people in the city of Los Angeles start calling out this reprehensible narrative being advanced by the DSA. And I think all of the local politicians that have accepted those endorsements and received help from that group or their affiliates need to reject it and denounce the movement. That's one piece of it. And the second piece of it here is who our district attorney is in general. I mean, this is someone that has created a public safety nightmare right here in the city of Los Angeles. And frankly, we should have known better. He was the district attorney up in San Francisco from 2011 to 2019, and, you know, he had never prosecuted a case. He had never even been in the courtroom as a lawyer before when he was appointed. And he immediately up there began exonerating thousands of drug offenders. He was a statewide leader in ending cash bail. There was massive attrition at the district attorney's office. In 2014, he authored Prop 47, which essentially legalized many drug crimes and thefts up to 950 bucks, made those misdemeanors, which he has refused to prosecute. And in fact, in one really egregious case up in San Francisco in 2017, one man who was out on a pretrial release deal under DA Gascon murdered another guy who was just taking pictures in the Twin Peaks area. So that was the wake of disaster that George Gascon left up in San Francisco when he decided to move to Los Angeles and run for district attorney in 2020. And what we have seen in the time that George Gascon has been the district attorney in the county of Los Angeles is a repeat of the same failed policies that had catastrophic effects up in San Francisco. So I have very little confidence in this district attorney to step up, to do the right thing, to empower the police to do their jobs in addressing hate crimes and antisemitism. And I don't trust this district attorney to competently prosecute crimes and charges when they are brought in those circumstances.
Thank you so much for coming out and saying this, because so many of your colleagues, so many elected officials in Los Angeles County recognize what a disaster that George Gascon has been for public safety. And not a disaster for public safety through incompetence. He is implementing the policies that he knows will destroy public safety because for whatever perverted reason, that is his goal. That's what he wants to accomplish while in office. But it seems like what many of them do is they're just passive aggressive towards him. They don't invite him to their press conferences. They don't reference him when they're talking about partners in law enforcement and trying to bring back public safety to Los Angeles County. But they won't explicitly say that he is part of the problem and he needs to go. And he's going to be on the ballot again in March, and we're going to have a number of candidates to choose from to see who the next district attorney will be. If they don't directly connect the dots, we risk him being reelected for another term.
We do, and this election could not be any more consequential. You know, I don't know why other local elected officials are afraid or unwilling to stand up and publicly call out the absolute failure that this district attorney and his policies have brought on the city and the region of Los Angeles, but let me be the first to do it. This DA has been an absolute disaster. We have record crime levels in the city of Los Angeles. It has been an absolute public safety nightmare. His policies have, you know, coddled criminals instead of supporting victims, and that is absolutely unacceptable in our district attorney. We do have an incredible opportunity in front of us to elect someone who is going to stand with victims, who is going to be smart and common sense when it comes to criminal justice policy. There are great candidates running, but it is so important that everybody in Los Angeles County recognize what this district attorney has done and how important it is that we course correct and we get it right next year when we have an opportunity to make a change.
Recently, there were a number of members of the LA City Council, the mayor, other officials from the city of Los Angeles that traveled to Washington DC to meet with members of Congress. Of course, LA Mayor Karen Bass, prior to being elected mayor, was not only a member of Congress and served with many members of Congress for many years, but she was part of the California State Legislature where she served as Speaker and served with many members in the state legislature who then went on to be elected to Congress. I'm sure the subject of dollars, the subject of money was one that was discussed with many members of congressional leadership and those on committees that dispersed the money. There was another aspect of that trip that made news. One of your colleagues, Hugo Soto Martinez, who is endorsed by the DSA, is a member of the DSA, decided to take a picture with Michigan Congresswoman Rashida Tlaib and post it on social media. Recently, Congresswoman Tlaib has publicly blamed Israel for attacks on a hospital in Gaza. Reports, by the way, that have been discredited by any number of media organizations, including those that initially suggested that it was Israel, like the Associated Press, the New York Times, others. The President of the United States, Joe Biden, has confirmed that that hospital was not in fact attacked by Israel, that it was friendly fire coming from Gaza. Yet she has not deleted the tweet, she has not corrected the record, she is publicly blaming Israel for attacks on that hospital. She's been denounced by members of Congress in both political parties, most recently by Debbie Wasserman Schultz, a Democrat from Florida, who went after her in very aggressive terms. Yet this is who Hugo Soto Martinez decided to take a selfie with and put on social media. The message that that sends back to Los Angeles, particularly to the Jewish residents of Los Angeles, is absolutely horrifying. What do you make of that selfie that was posted?
You know, I was on that trip to DC, and I really want to thank and credit Mayor Bass for arranging that. Those were very substantive, high level meetings that we participated in. But, you know, I wasn't present for that meeting between Councilmember Soto Martinez and the Congresswoman. But what I would say is that it is indicative of a very dangerous, extreme element that is taking root in our, not just local politics, but national politics as well. And we are seeing that, you know, infiltrating here in city council in Los Angeles. And, you know, these are these DSA backed candidates and elected officials who not only call for the elimination of Israel, who spread that antisemitic and frankly reprehensible hate speech about Israel. But, you know, these are folks that, you know, want to defund and abolish our police. They want to empty jails and prisons. They do not want criminals to have consequences for criminal behavior. And this is a very, very dangerous precedent to set, and I think that it is incumbent upon voters here in Los Angeles to know who these people are and who is behind the campaigns that they're running. And let me be clear, you know, these are people up in the state assembly as well that are churning out these soft on crime bills. I mean, if you just take a look at what happened with SB 14, for example, a piece of legislation to make this trafficking, the sex trafficking of children, of kids, a serious crime that would count as a strike under California law. And, you know, members of the Assembly Public Safety Committee didn't want to let it out of committee on the theory that somehow this was going to, you know, this impact, detrimentally impact disadvantaged communities. And it's just absolutely absurd, the rhetoric and the irresponsible policies that are coming out of these radical, extreme fringe candidates and politicians. And folks have got to be willing to stand up and speak out against this on all fronts.
Recently, you traveled up to the Bay Area, to the city and county of San Francisco, to observe what they're doing in terms of public safety and homelessness and how that relates to Los Angeles. What did you find?
Well, you know, I went up there because San Francisco has actually always been one of my favorite cities anywhere in the world, but the headlines that San Francisco has seen post DA Gascon, post DA Chesa Boudin, you know, 25% vacancy in commercial real estate, retailers closing, rampant retail theft and car break-ins, surging overdose deaths and open drug air markets. And, you know, that unfortunately, a lot of the imagery coming out of San Francisco is exactly what we are seeing happening here on the streets in the city of Los Angeles. But up in San Francisco, there are some new leaders that are being a lot more honest and responsible about their approaches to this. And so my mission in going up to San Francisco was to sit down with some of those folks to find out what things they had tried, what was working and what wasn't working, and what some of the fixes are. You know, for example, you've got, you know, the mayor of San Francisco now shifting to a much heavier focus on enforcement because yes, actually, open air drug use is still a crime. We see her calling for a ban on the city's general assistants to folks that are testing positive for drugs. We saw her give a pretty healthy mid-year increase in overtime to the San Francisco Police Department. You know, you've got Supervisor Matt Dorsey, who I met with when I was in San Francisco, who actually said something that really resonated with me that I'm not going to forget. Coercive interventions save lives. Consequences save lives. You know, we don't hear policymakers here in Los Angeles very often, maybe except for me, saying things like that. Up in San Francisco, the new district attorney, Brooke Jenkins, is really making a lot of progress, focusing on increasing the police department resources, ensuring that there are adequate officers on the streets, focusing on disrupting the drug dealing and actually prosecuting people for open air drug use. Those are the changes that we are starting to see them make. They are starting to have an actual impact in the circumstances on the ground, and those are the things that we need to do here in Los Angeles. I don't want to waste time repeating things that have been tried elsewhere and failed. I want to get right to the things that are going to work and make improvements here in the city of Los Angeles. So that's what I was up to in San Francisco last week.
I love that term coercive intervention, because you don't hear terms like that anymore. You don't hear terms like people who break the law need to go to jail. You don't hear that anymore. It seems like the buzzword that you hear all the time is quote unquote accountability, because accountability means nothing. Accountability means you check a box. With zero bail, it means you write them a ticket, or you tell them to show up to court and subdate in the future, and you don't notify law enforcement. And from their point of view, they did something that doesn't involve jail, and that is accountability. Well, accountability means nothing, and it has failed us. And we need to change what we're doing, or we're going to get the same result.
And that's right. And we have basically eliminated any personal accountability out of how we are dealing with crime on our streets. And it is DSA backed elected officials like DA Gascon that are the source of the policies and the problems that are making things on the streets worse, worse. And, you know, while I was in San Francisco, I did a walk south of Market with Mothers Against Drug Addiction and Death. You know, and these are moms that have lost children and family members to the fentanyl crisis. They are calling for real policy changes to get the drugs and the dealing out of the neighborhoods. You know, I spent time walking Selma also with my friend Tom Wolf, who is a recovery advocate, who at one point was homeless and addicted in San Francisco himself. And he will tell you that it was not until he went to jail that he got sober, until there were personal consequences for him that he engaged in the treatment and the services that he needed to get sober. The moms that I spent time with all said, if my kid had gone to jail, they might still be alive today.
Los Angeles City Councilwoman Tracy Park, you're doing God's work. Thank you so much for stopping by. You're welcome here anytime you want to come on.
Thanks, John. Always a pleasure to be with you. I'll talk to you soon.
If you'd like to email the show, you can do so at johnnydon'tlikshow@gmail.com. That's johnnydon'tlikshow@gmail.com. And Randy, if you want to go back and listen to that bang up of an interview that Tracy Park just gave us, the best I think she's ever done on this program, and you need a shot in the arm, you think everything is lost and nothing's ever going to get fixed in California, and you need some kind of affirmation that there are people with a brain in their head that are in elected positions in California, you can go back and listen to that interview.
That's right. Go to kabc.com, click on Podcast after 2 o'clock. The hour is still happening right now. Or go to the Apple Podcast app, iHeart, Spotify, search for The John Phillips Show, hit subscribe. That way, as soon as I post it, it goes straight to your phone. But even easier than that, you can get the KABC app. Search KABC AM in the Apple or the Android store. Best way to listen live to this station wherever you're outside of the AM radio signal, and it downloads all the podcasts of this show, including today's 1 o'clock hour, where you can hear LA City Councilwoman Tracy Park put George Gascon on a spit and roast him.
Quite frankly. And Randy, coming up in November, we're going on the road.
That's right. Save the date, Friday, November 17th. John and I will be broadcasting live at the brand new Gelson's West LA at Wellstedge. It's on the corner of Olympic and Bundy. That store opens Wednesday, November 1st. So the west side, you're getting a brand new Gelson's with a huge gorgeous wine bar and all the other incredible amenities that you get at Gelson's. Friday, November 17th, the Gelson's West LA at West Edge. We will see you there.
Throwback Thursday, World Series edition of The John Phillips Show. Songs about Texas and Arizona, because that's who made the World Series.
Sorry, Dodgers.
And it must have television executives ready to jump off a building.
Well, Texas is a big market, but yeah, Arizona, not so much.
No, no. If they had it their way, it would be LA versus New York every single time. And if it couldn't be LA versus New York, it would be LA versus Boston, or San Francisco versus New York. You, maybe Chicago every now and then, but you don't need these small market teams in the World Series if you're looking for huge television and radio ratings. All right, it is the Fix California Hour, and there's a crime story that was reported on by Ed Laskos. So let's reopen that KABC crime blotter.
If the cashier is dummy.
Questions?
Enough already.
All right, here we go. Another firebug in Southern California, which means Ed Laskos is on the scene for some jackass on a bicycle who for no reason decided to torch and explode a Lexus. It is not a good day for luxury cars.
No, it's not.
For more, here is Ed on Fox 11.
Fire in this quiet neighborhood. A parked car, a Lexus, targeted and torched.
He's the best.
Bend down and lit something and threw it under the car, and then the car burst into flames. And about 10 minutes later, it started to explode.
Well, there you have it.
Now, check this. Security video from across the street appears to show a man on a bicycle. He rides up, he stops, he ignites something under the car. You can see it flashing there. You're watching as this man, he's intentionally setting that car on fire.
This big boom, so I ran to the front door, looked out. A big boom.
It's almost as if this firebug is totally out of his mind.
This big boom, so.
That was Randy.
This big boom, so I ran to the front door, looked out, saw a fire. It was like, what in the world is happening? You know, when you put it all together at the end, and you're like, this was a deliberate act, you're like, I can't believe this is happening in my neighborhood.
We have a fire in the 1500 block.
Neighbors call it in to 911, and LA City Fire rushes in.
Thank God our 911 works.
Well, give it time. We're going to end up like Oakland at some point.
An LA City Fire rushes in. We know it's not an electric car that just burst into flames by itself. LAPD says it's investigating. Neighbors here say it's the dirty work of an arsonist.
That's an Ed Laskos-ism.
And he was standing there, working on getting that fire lit for at least 15 seconds. So that was purely intentional, and...
What do you think about the Lexus made this firebug think, I gotta blow this thing up right now?
I don't think it's the Lexus, I think it's the meth.
I'm not sure what he used to light it, but it went up pretty fast.
The fire destroys the car, damages a vehicle parked in the next space over. But for Delisa, it is much more terrifying than that, the burning car, the flames all way too close to her home and her sleeping family.
Do you think AAA covers your car getting blown up by an arsonist?
Probably not, but this is also why it's hard for us to get homeowners insurance, because when these cars blow up that are next to your home, your home goes up with it. And when your home goes up with it, eventually State Farm says, you have too many crazy people starting fires, we're going elsewhere.
And of course, we've reported this many times, but it's always worth saying again, over half of all the fire calls that come into LA FD and LA County FD are set by crazy homeless drug addicts.
I'm extremely concerned, especially as you can see, our gas lines were right there next to the fire, and that could have caused further damage and a lot worse damage.
And then check this out. After setting the fire, the man's back on his bicycle, he is riding off into the darkness.
Job well done.
As if nothing happened. But for Delisa and her family, the damage here is already done.
We work from home, we don't do a lot of, you know, my son goes to college online, so I don't understand how it could be targeted to us.
There you go. Lexus gets blown up for absolutely no reason because firebug wanted to see something boom.
We've talked to Dr. Drew about this. We've talked to other people about this, and they say there's not an association with meth and starting fires. But given everything that we know, there has to be some kind of association between the two.
Well, you typically need a blowtorch to heat up your crack pipe, so there is that association. The firebug thing, though, that might not be meth. That might be that this arsonist gets a sexual excitement out of lighting things on fire.
Well, that adds an extra level layer of gross on top of it. If you'd like to email the show, you can do so at johnnydon'tlikshow@gmail.com. That's johnnydon'tlikshow@gmail- That's johnnydon'tlikshow@gmail.com. And Randy, you're monitoring the mailbag.
Richard writes in at johnnydon'tlikshow@gmail.com. We are winning all around. LA is number one in retail theft, and now we have to worry about freeway pirates.
Well, in Oakland, they have to worry about actual pirates.
It's wild, wild west out here.